Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, April 17, 2018. The time is 8:27. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
We're gonna, we apologize, first of all, for coming out so late. We had some executive matters that we needed to discuss before the meeting, and we're gonna kind of go around the agenda a little bit, but we're gonna start with the proclamation. So Commissioner Patraco?
Thank you. Again, we're sorry to keep everybody waiting. Before I read the proclamation, I do have to give kudos to my friend, Mr. Kelly, over there, for all the work you do with all the students at Nutley High School. It's fabulous. The proclamation reads, "Whereas for the fifth consecutive year, Nutley High School's TV3 students have taken the challenge to be part of the You Got Brains campaign schools program, which is sponsored by the Brain Injury Alliance of New Jersey. And whereas each year, the students develop a video that showcases a topic emphasizing the safety issues that need to be addressed by teenage drivers. And whereas last year, Nutley High School students were awarded the grand prize for the top media campaign in New Jersey and were honored at the Champion Schools Program Showcase at Great Adventure. And whereas this year, the students' co-producers, Aleni Navarro and Nicolette Padilla, as well as Clara J. Abaya Campos, Joseph D'Alessio, Sean Devine, Eric DiNardo, Anthony Fabiana, Ryan Locke, Laura O'Keefe, and Shane Sullivan, choose to address the driver pedestrian safety and set forth to determine the needs of the community at large, and then formulated a plan to utilize social media and create concepts. And whereas through collaboration with the township government, the Nutley High School TV3 worked diligently to bring this to the forefront, this important issue, by using social media platforms such as Twitter, Facebook, Nutley High School TV's YouTube page, as well as helping to get 25 mile an hour speed zone signs into school safety zones on Franklin Avenue. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Nutley High School's TV3 class be commended for their dedication and commitment to the project that has brought awareness to important issues of driver pedestrian safety, not only for these teenage drivers, but for the entire community. These students continue to make us proud." So we don't have to vote on a proclamation, obviously, but I'd just like to have our mayor and our fellow commissioners comment because, again, I've been to the classes at the school, you know, all the students, you do a great job. I hope it's really helping Nutley in teaching the classmates, some of our middle-aged driver or elder drivers, to really respect, you know, the pedestrians and not texting and all the distractions that you could be found. So I really commend all of yous. Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to add, congratulations to Mr. Kelly's class. You know, you guys really are bringing attention to a thing that's very powerful. We have not only people who do not pay attention to people in the crosswalks, we also have students who don't look up from their cellphones. So it goes both ways. So what I can ask the students to do is, one, when you're in the crosswalk, please make eye contact with the driver to make sure they're gonna stop, because if you don't make eye contact with them, they may not stop your walk, and we don't want to see anybody get hurt. So I think that's one thing you guys can do, besides also promoting what you're also promoting, and some of the changes that we've initiated as a township to make more pedestrian-friendly in the center of town. So congratulations again.
You know, many years from now, you may pick up a newspaper, if we still have them, or you might read on social media about an accident that took place somewhere, but more so than a life was saved because of the work you did today. What you've done is very significant, I mean, really significant, to create a public awareness that we're not getting as often as we should, so I congratulate you on that, but just remember on this day what I tell you. Good work that people do always, always comes back in big dividends many years to come. So thank you so much for the work you did.
At the risk of being redundant, I'd like to congratulate everyone, all right, on receiving this grand prize, I mean, throughout the state of New Jersey. I mean, does it get much better than this? I mean, to be recognized for all your hard work is something that we on this Board of Commissioners have known for years, all right, and I'll refer to him as I know him. Coach Kelly has been doing wonderful work, all right, in this area for years, and I know for as long as he decides he wants to continue doing it, that we're going to have groups of students, just like we have here this evening, excelling. So congratulations, and once again, Coach, you and your team make us very proud.
Commissioner?
So, much has been said, and I won't repeat that. I will offer my congratulations, Coach Kelly. Absolutely echo Commissioner Tucci's comments on your leadership and demonstrating leadership to young people, which is so vital today. So I want to congratulate all of you. Please look for other areas where you can engage and have a voice and influence the way we go forward. I want to, in the name of my children, and especially my grandson, you know, thank you, because it's getting, you know, with the speeds you see of people driving today, especially when you see someone driving, and I was coming home from Trenton this afternoon, and sure enough, there's somebody in the middle lane, they're in and out of the lane a little bit, and when I drive past, they're actually looking at their cellphone. So, you know, it's so important today that you reinforce those messages and continue to do that. So congratulations to all of you.
Before we take a picture, Mr. Kelly, you want to say a couple words?
....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
We'll give them a couple seconds, all right, Madam Clerk.
Um...
Rose is here? Or you have a chair? I'll sit.
Oops.
You want to do Rosey, or you want to just...
Um, we can do it.
What's the minutes and... Madam Clerk, we do minutes first, all right?
Yes.
All right, minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we have regular meeting minutes for March 6, 2018. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
We have executive session minutes for March 20, 2018. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
We have executive session minutes for March 20, 2018. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Again, we're gonna switch around again. Resolution, one resolution for Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I want to read resolution. Tonight, we're appointing Rosemarie Berry as our certified tax collector. Before I do that, I want to take a moment to thank Ro Costa, who's sitting to my right. With her many years of experience and her multiple licenses, we've been able to work through a period where we haven't had a certified tax collector, which is required by statute. What we've been able to do is we've been able to send Rosemarie to school and make sure she has the necessary and requisite experience to be able to step into this role. So I just want to take a moment and say, Ro, thank you for everything you did to help get us to this point tonight. So I'll read the resolution, and Rosemarie, she's in the back of the room tonight. Whereas Chapter 384 PL 1979 requires that a person who is a certified tax collector be appointed as tax collector of the municipality, and whereas Rosemarie Berry's CTC has been certified, a certified tax collector, since April 13, 2015, and meets all the requirements of said law, and whereas Rosemarie Berry has earned 27 continuing education credits, and as such, she has maintained her license in good standing. Whereas Rosemarie Berry is a person of good character who has now gained the valuable and necessary experience to assume all of the duties of tax collector for the Township of Nutley. Whereas the Township of Nutley wishes to appoint Rosemarie Berry to the statutorially required position of tax collector of the Township for the initial term of four years, beginning May 1, 2018, through April 30, 2022 pursuant to NJSA 48:9-142. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Rosemarie Berry is hereby appointed for the position of tax collector for the initial four-year term, beginning May 1, 2018, through April 30, 2022. Be further resolved that Rosemarie Berry will continue to earn all of the necessary continuing education credits needed to maintain her license in good standing pursuant to Chapter 384 PL 1979. So move.
Second. I'm sorry.
Congratulations. Good.
Second. Commissioner Tucci, you seconded, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, before I vote, certainly congratulate you, and I wish you all of God's blessings. And a little thing about you, Ro Costa, you sit way across there. You know, in a day and age when public employees really don't get the credit that they should get, for you to stepping up and doing the things that you have done, thank you very much, and God bless you. I vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, before I vote, I'd like to congratulate Rosemarie on a job well done. We have the benefit of having two members of the Berry family serving this township. Dave, her husband, who's our zoning officer, is sitting right next to her. So we are very fortunate to have another part of our family working with us every day. And Ro, thank you for all that you've done to bring Rosemarie along. I'm sure she's gonna have a long and glorious career here. Congratulations. I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Congratulations. And Ro, you get to take that hat and give it to her.
What are you down to now? Six?
Thank you.
Let's go to communications.
Yes, we have, Commissioner Tucci has submitted an event application for an outdoor concert on Franklin Avenue between New Street and Harrison Street on Thursday, June 14, 2018, between 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM, with a rain date of Friday, June 15, 2018. Motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Reports, Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, I have a Shadree report for the month of March 2018.
Commissioner Patraco?
I have a Department of Public Safety report for March 2018 as well.
And I have reports for March of 2018. Bills?
Bill list for April 17, 2018. Public Affairs, $107,129.82. Revenue and Finance, $13,194,370.50. Public Safety, $46,085.36. Public Works, $424,109. Parks and Public Property, $24,972.52. Water Utility, $15,217.6. Total Payroll, $841,957.72. For a grand total of $14,653,841.98.
Your bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding a community concern should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Boring more, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans, Page 2 of the bill list, CD and comp. Can you tell me what that bill is for?
Page 2?
Page 2, back in the little page.
Succeeding payment?
Yes.
Debt service on...
Is that a quarterly payment?
It's a... This one. That includes both the payment as well as the maturity on the 9 million we're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah. We have a one-year note that matures.
Oh, okay. It's one year now. And one other question on, Mr. Tucci.
Yes.
On the resurfacing. What's the field?
Resurfacing of what?
Your resolution.
Okay. The re-turfing?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Trying to trip me up, huh? Go ahead. What is the lifespan, the anticipated lifespan? I think the last...
Typically, the warranty runs eight years. On the last turf that we put down, I believe we got close to 12.
I thought it was 10, yes. I think it was something like that.
No.
Is this a similar one?
I'm sorry?
Is this a similar warranty? Are you gonna get another 10 years out of this?
We expect to get at least 10 years out of it, and what has also occurred under Frank DeMayo's direction, we've perfected the art of grooming the turf, which is instrumental in prolonging the life, because once the fibers are forced to lay down, it's hard to get them back up. But if you keep the proper amount of fill and you keep it groomed and sanitized the way it should be, it's not only safe for the people playing on it, but it also prolongs the life.
And because we're receiving state money on this, do other towns or other counties, are they allowed to play on the field, or is that restricted to Nutley?
Typically, what happens with any green acres project, you cannot preclude other folks from other towns from playing on it, but people from Nutley obviously get first priority, and our fields, all right, are used so extensively that there is very little time for anyone else to use it. But on occasion, other folks do use it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements, Commissioners. Go ahead.
Just a quick one, that the Town Hall and Clerk's Office will be open until 8:00 PM on April 19 and 26 for late night registration.
Commissioner?
Yes, just an update as to where we are after the heavy rains, the deluge, that pretty much turned all of our parks that had streams running through them into rivers. We have completed the initial cleanup on the mud hole, which is Memorial 1. We've completed the work on Memorial 2, which is the one right adjacent to it, and we are now working on Brookfield, and we suspect that once we are done cleaning everything, we will be top seeding, I'm sorry, yes, top seeding and replenishing any soil that has washed away. So we're making progress. There was some substantial damage there. I actually taped some of it on my phone, and it was unbelievable. So that's where we are. That's all I have, Mayor.
Good job, by the way, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I have two announcements. One, electronic recycling will be this Saturday, April 21, at Lot 8 behind Warricoe, as well as compost day within next week, April 28, same spot, Lot 8 behind Warricoe. Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans, you have ordinance on second reading and a public hearing?
Yeah, I have, first, I have to have a public hearing on ordinance number 3382, which was an ordinance that we introduce every year to establish what is called a cat bank, which allows us to establish a bank on paper only that would, in effect, in a year if we needed to exceed the 2% to 2.5% appropriation ceiling because of an extraordinary item that we could use the bank, the bank itself, that would statutorily allow us to exceed that. It exists for two years and then it goes away. So we're always replenishing that reserve. We have not had a need to use it. We've avoided that step at all costs. But it is prudent to always reestablish the cap, what is called the cap bank.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3382?
Close to public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Let's move on to the budget hearing.
Yes. Tonight, we have a public comment period on the budget that was introduced in, on March 20th, 2018. We will not adopt our budget tonight. We are still working on state aid, which, as in prior years, we have not, we won't receive approval on our state aid amount until sometime late, late May, early, early June. So at prior meetings, we have introduced temporary budget authorizations, which is required by statute to allow the government to operate. So tonight, we have introduced a budget which has a few things in it that still are subject to additional work. As you know, when we commented on this, that the Board of Commissioners started in the fall of last year to evaluate all of our budget, budgetary line items and see where we could actually save some money. The reason for that is that at that time, we were forecasting a, an increase of $2.9 million or seven and a half percent on the municipal tax levy. So when you think about your tax bill, it's got a municipal piece, a county piece, and a school piece. And if we were looking at seven and a half percent on just the municipal portion, that would be an extraordinary increase, and it was clearly unaffordable. So working collectively as a group, commissioners embraced this, and we've taken actions across all of our departments. The budget still reflects a tax levy increase of $1,466,000. So it's down from the 2.9, but it's still higher than what we want it to be, and we're going to still continue to work to get there. One component of this is that, under statute, we're only allowed to anticipate 85% of the aid dollars we received from the prior year. We have to wait until we get approval. So this budget reflects roughly $3.1 million in transitional aid versus the 3.6 million, 650,000 that we got last year. So there's roughly a $550,000 gap between the aid year over year. I've been working with the state on increasing our aid, returning to our previous aid because of, that aid is linked to all of the activities that are going on at Hoffmann Roche. We did make a lot of cuts, but basically, three things impacted us right before we had to introduce our budget. One was that we got our bill for sewage, and it increased $197,000 over the year before. So for whatever happens in town, that's a bill that we receive. It's not a local bill. It's for the service of removing sewage. It increased 197,000. We also have a pension responsibility for our employees, and that's a bill that comes from the state. We received that bill, and that bill increased by $389,000. The last element was a bit of a surprise in that our water utility had a revenue shortfall of $341,000 because of lower consumption. Water usage went down. So year over year, waters went down. So that shortfall has to be funded. So we have to, that's in, and it has to be funded in our operating budget, which would have to be evaluated by the Board of Commissioners, led by Mayor Scarpelli, around how do we address the water utility in terms of absorbing that amount. So if you sort of look at all those items together, those items contribute to the majority of why the levy, which the amount of work that the commissioners did, which was exceptional to eliminate most of the $2.9 million worth of increase, was partially offset, that benefit was partially offset by these bills, these two bills and the shortfall of the water utility. So every commissioner can talk about their individual budgets. When I look at the appropriation side, this budget reflects municipality-wide, a roughly a $200,000 decrease in salaries. So, and that's because of actions that have been taken by each of the commissioners in their respective departments. This budget also reflects a lower appropriation to the public library of $100,000. We're statutorily required to provide the library with roughly $1.2 million worth of revenue. Nutley has always exceeded that by $400,000. We trimmed that by 25%. So that brought their appropriation down by $100,000. We've been working very hard to manage our debt down. And so you're seeing us use short-term interest rates because they're to our advantage. We are keeping our debt at a very low level. We have roughly $16 million worth of municipal debt outstanding. We have the ability to borrow $128 million. So we keep it, we keep it low. Our current interest rate on that debt is less than 3%, and the average life of that debt is 10 years. So it's basically a 10-year mortgage at rates less than 3%. So we're managing that very, very closely. You hear about us having appropriations for capital improvements in our budget every year. By having a cap on that, which is roughly $1.5 million a year, over time, that's allowed us to manage our debt down. So this budget actually reflects a $300,000 decrease in our debt service for 2018. And if I look at the other areas of other operating expense across the board collectively, they're down by roughly $320,000. So that's broadly what happens with the budget. What's important to point out is that in a government that's formed under the wall shack, each commissioner has the authority to craft their own budget and decide what they want to do within that budget without regard to the other departments. I'm very pleased, and I want to acknowledge my commissioners for embracing the fact that we are one town and we have one budget collectively, that we need to meet the parameters of while we actually meet the service requirements of the town. So thank you all for embracing the fact that we had a $2.9 million problem that needed to be addressed, and how diligently you all worked together to help bring this amount down. It's my hope that, and today I met with the state again on our state aid request, which was, I would characterize it as a very positive and productive meeting. Nothing can be finalized until the state adopts its budget, which we won't know about until later at the end of May. But today's meeting, they were very receptive to the conditions that are in Nutley, the what's going on with the conversion of the Roche site. And I'm feeling good about our ability to, at a minimum, get the aid that we got last year, but actually get, hopefully get a piece of what we lost back. So that's, in summary, where we're at. Ray Serenelli is here as our outside auditor. I'll just ask Ray if you want to make a few comments before we open it to the public.
Ray Serenelli, Volker for Melvin Township. So I guess you're probably thinking the budget process seems like it's taking forever, and it's because it is. And we're not at the end of the process. Working on this a long time, probably longer than you have in most other years, and you're probably a little more than two-thirds of the way through the process. Usually, the budget process starts with the call to me from Commissioner Evans that says, Raymond, you know, we only have a budget. We want to do a pro forma. We do one or two pro formas, then you do your budget. And introduce it, move on, maybe adopt it within a month. This year, there were eight pro formas. Every month, I got a new call from Commissioner Evans. Commissioners met. More cuts were made from starting, which Commissioner Evans spoke about, about seven and a half percent. Continued that process until last month, when the budget was ready to be adopted. Your circumstance has been very different than the rest of the three quarters, because you're still trying to manage your way through the loss of major rig or approach. And it's been a give-and-take process, I'll say, somewhat, some with the state, some with your own budget and your own cuts. And you've really managed that very well through the last five years to come up with reasonable increases as it relates to the municipal part of tax levy. Put into that circumstance, and I'll say somewhat... A little bit, the state this year to help it through. And then try and manage your own budget. It was an extensive process. But this year, in my view, was a new comprehensive look at the entire budget like I had never seen before. It's funny, I was with our best partner before I came down here, Raymond Savatia, and we were arguing whether we started with Nutley in 1976 or 1977. And I think it was confirmed that it was 1976. So we've been doing this a long time. You know, it's automatic, but from a historical perspective, it probably was the most comprehensive and detailed look done on a collaborative basis that I've seen all of the commissioners working together to get a good result for Melvin Township and taxpayers. It's been fantastic to watch, as you cooperated to get the budget to a point where you're going to break over municipal budget for recent increases in the circumstances. You're doing what most other towns have done without us. So normally, you know, one of you, sometimes Commissioner Evans, or one of the other commissioners asks, well, you know, how are other towns managing what they're doing? And I think everyone is still trying to stay, you know, at that 2% benchmark or pretty close to that. You've been fairly close to that in the last five years, a little bit below it in some years. Other towns are starting to struggle to stay at 2%. Because inflation is now above 2%. That's, you know, that's the bad news, I guess, a little bit difficult. Keep your budget at 2% when your normal expenses are going up more than that. What other towns have... Been able to do, and it has helped you in some ways, is the economy has been good. So interest rates are a little better, construction, and we were able to add in every year. Other than the loss of Hoffmann Roche for five years. Gross, but then it is the whole budget, tax rate. So you're close. I mean, you know, depending on what the final state aid number is, you're probably a few months away from finishing the process. I think you have a pretty good product, but with that final state aid is known, I'm sure you're going to like to take another look at your budget and see what adjustments you can make. Hopefully, the final tax levy will be less than what... At least, that's what I'm hearing from the reps. It's optimistic that you're going to get more than 85% and not that 100%. So the process to continue your budget would be tonight, is to hold the public hearing, allow them to... Budget has not been approved by Trenton because they haven't finalized your statement. And you won't be allowed to adopt your budget until you get approval and your final state aid award is announced. The award is awarded. So you will table the budget for further discussion, wait until the state finalized, and you'll be able to take action at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Serenelli.
Wishers, any comments?
I'm just very hopeful that our state aid is restored to a level where we don't have to inflict the pain that unfortunately, we've all been planning for. I mean, whether it's elimination of positions, people that are currently working or not filling certain positions, relieving temporary employees of their employ. This was not an easy budget to strike. I think we've all done very admirable work, and are trying to alleviate inflicting any pain on any of the departments. But in the interest of the taxpayers, we are in fact, and were in fact, prepared to do whatever was necessary to keep the increases at a minimum, if anything at all. So, Commissioner Evans, I'd like to congratulate you on bringing all of this together. Mr. Serenelli, once again, you've done an outstanding job. Mayor Commissioners, I mean, what can I say? These are not easy times that we're working in, but we're all doing our best, and I believe we're getting close to where we want to be. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner? Yeah, I'd like to express what Commissioner Tucci said, but there's one thing I would hope that the public would do down the road, and that is to get educated, especially critics of municipal government. We can only do so much as a municipal government. Bulk of taxes come from your county, your school board, your state, and we bear the brunt of what they do. Some of these departments are under restraints of state mandates where they have to spend money. I know your department, you got to spend a fortune on training. So when people are criticizing municipal government, and I'm not just talking about Nutley, I've been around. This is not unique, that you have citizens that will criticize the spending of local government. It's all over. But I find out that when you engage in a conversation with people, and they're willing to listen, they begin to understand, well, wait a minute. Maybe the burden of taxes should not be fully placed on the municipal elected officials. So I would ask that, actually, I'm speaking to a small crowd here, but I know there's a big crowd that watches this TV show. I would ask that the public who's watching and listening, do a little research. You're going to find out that, at least I can speak for this municipal government, that we've done the best we could under most difficult circumstances, and I know other municipalities share that. That's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. I'd just like to say that, first of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Evans, too. I know I have the biggest department in, on the municipal side, and I know we spent a lot of trying times together this budget cycle, to say the least. And a lot of times, they ended in shouting matches, but I appreciate the help, number one. And I think that what we try to do up here is strike a balance. You know, we know who we represent, that we represent the taxpayers, you know, first. And, you know, we try to be fair to the workers here. And, you know, I have to say that the 10-plus years I've been on this board, you know, with kind of layoffs looming in the background of this budget cycle, that I'd just like to say to my fellow commissioners as well, is that we were willing to do whatever we had to do to bring this tax rate down. And like Commissioner Rogers has said, sometimes, no matter what we do, you know, when it gets out to the public, it's not good enough because it's still a tax hike. But one thing that we are conscious of, and I know I am, is the services that we provide. You know, you know, we have a paid fire department here. I've heard a lot of scuttlebutts over that, you know, through the years. You know, thank God you never had a fire at your house. You know, until you do, they're the best guys in the world, and everybody loves them. You know, the police department, the salaries are high. There's no question about it. But in any instance, you know, my guys are there, or my women, I should say, include them too now, because we have women police officers here. Anywhere in town, they're there in a flash. You know, and Nutley's a safe town. We have, you know, all good departments and services here. And, you know, the costs are being inflated, and we do the best we can, again, strike that balance to try to keep it to a minimum when it comes to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to say that this was a long process. Started much earlier than we usually start. We had a lot of things to look at to get to where we are today. I know in Public Works, you know, we wound up outsourcing a piece of our recycling and not filling some positions. So, you know, we all worked very hard together to get to this point, and we're going to continue to work hard. And hopefully, Trenton cooperates with us, which would be, you know, very good as we go forward and we start making the transition into Roche coming on board. So I'd like to congratulate everybody for the work that they did, and we'll see where we wind up in whatever month that is.
Public comment?
Anybody like to be heard on the 2018 budget? Seeing none.
Close to public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. I didn't mean to say this was a TV show. Okay? I was at a loss for words on how to describe it, so I don't want to get criticized over that. I vote yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Move to table the...
We table the adoption until we hear from state aid, which won't be until the end of May.
Do we need to vote on the table or no?
No.
Okay. Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution number 10618 to proclaim April 21st to April 28th, 2018, as National Infant Immunization Awareness Week. I move that as written and as submitted. Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Be resolved by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Resolution number 2317, adopted on January 17, 2017, entitled Returf Field at Father Glotzbach Park, is hereby rescinded. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
This resolution is a reintroduction because there were, in fact, some technical errors with the first one that we just, that I just rescinded. So this is a resolution, State of New Jersey, Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres Program. This is an enabling resolution to allow the Father Glotzbach soccer field turf project to move forward. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasury be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $2,657.45 for the lots and blocks that are listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 4-18 on January 2nd, 2018, and whereas this resolution provided for the appointment of the law firm of Inglisino, Webster, Wiskala and Taylor, 600 Porcifany Road, Suite 204 Porcifany, New Jersey, a special development council for the On 3 site formerly Hoffmann Roche pursuant to NJSA 1944, A 20.4 and 20.5 and/or 20.5. Whereas that resolution inadvertently excluded a not-to-exceed amount of $95,000, which is needed in order to comply with purchasing laws for the payment to vendors. Whereas the Township of Nutley wishes to amend Resolution 4-18 to include a not-to-exceed amount with the understanding that these fees are reimbursable by the redeveloper pursuant to municipal land use law. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby amend Resolution 4-18 to include a not-to-exceed amount of $95,000. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, this is a resolution to reappoint our Judge Joanne Caciolo. And before I read it, I'd just like to say that before when the Honorable Michael Viola And especially when Judge Viola kind of got sick and passed away suddenly. And I have to say, it's just been a real pleasure to work across the street with Joanne. She really gets it. She does a good job. She's always there if somebody has a question, and I'd just like to say she's been a good addition to our courts the last few years. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, New Jersey, that Joanne Caciolo be appointed municipal judge for the Township of Nutley for the three-year term, effective May 15, 2018 through May 15, 2021. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye, but I'd like to also add Judge Caciolo has been an outstanding judge, and not only that, I'll tell you what, she's been a darn good role model for children in this town, especially young women. So I'm really proud that she's here. I vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, and I'd also like to commend the judge. I started with her on this Board of Commissioners back in 2000. It was a pleasure working with her. The comments that I hear most often about her as a judge is that she's very fair, but she's also very firm. So it's a pleasure to vote aye.
Commissioner Evans?
I vote yes and offer my full congratulations on her reappointment.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Congratulations, Judge. Close to me. So, Resolution number 118, whereas an application has been filed by Crimson 95 Spirits for a person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption license number 071633023003, here to issue to TBG Inc., trading as Park Pub, for premises located at 789 Bluefield Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. Whereas the submitted application form is completed in all respects, the transfer fees have been paid, and the license has been properly renewed for the current license term. Whereas the establishment has been inspected by the Board of Health, Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department, Police Department of Township of Nutley, and is in satisfactory condition. Whereas applicant is qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by Title 33 of the New Jersey statutes, regulations promulgated thereunder, as well as pertinent local ordinance and conditions consistent with Title 33. And whereas the applicant has disclosed and the issuing authority reviewed the source of all funds used to purchase of the license, the licensed business, and all additional financing obtained in connection with the licensed business. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, does hereby approve, effective April 17, 2018, the transfer of the aforementioned plenary retail consumption license from TBG Inc. to Crimson 95 Spirit. Does hereby direct the municipal clerk to endorse license certificate to the new owner as follows. License subject to all its terms and conditions is hereby transferred to Crimson 95 Spirit LLC, trading as the Park Pub, effective April 17, 2018. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Mr. Rayna, congratulations. Whereas raffle applications received from the following organizations, Nutley Family Service Rural License number 1818, off-premise cash raffle Friday, June 22, 2018, where the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, New Jersey, that the aforementioned license is approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas the mandatory source separation recycling act of public law, 1987, Chapter 102, has established recycling fund from which tonnage grants may be made to municipalities in order to encourage local source separation recycling programs. Whereas the intent in the sphere of the mandatory source separation recycling act to use the tonnage grants to develop new municipal recycling programs and to continue and expand existing programs. Whereas such a resolution should designate the individual authorized to ensure that the application is properly completed and timely filed. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley hereby endorses the submission of the 2017 municipal recycling tonnage grant application for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and designate Sal Ferraro, Recycling Coordinator, Township of Nutley, to ensure that the application is properly filed. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners at this time? Mr. Rayna, also, good luck to you.
Congratulations.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the forum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I have three questions, and I'd like to comment on Mr. Rogers if I may. I'm a conclusion. Mr. Patrako, a few weeks ago, we had vendor-bender with the rental fire trucks, and you said the police department had difficulty writing up the police report. Is that report completed?
Say, what did I say again?
Yeah, there was a vendor-bender with the rental fire truck.
Yeah.
I remember I had asked you about it publicly, and you said that the police department had a difficult time writing up the police report for the accident.
I don't think I've ever said that, the police department had a difficult time. But I think you were asking for a report or something.
Yes.
And I told, I said that night, just let Sam Correll hand it to you, my assistant at the time.
No, there was not. In fact, I suspended an Oprah, and the Oprah said there was no police report.
I would have to look into that tomorrow because, as far as I know, there was a police report. And on the mic, I said to you that night, just get it, it's fine, you don't have to Oprah it, you can get it right from Sam Correll, my assistant.
Now, I can call Sam tomorrow, and I could get copies of the report.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If you have a problem, call me. I'll look into it.
Well, I know you're busy.
Well, I'm busy, but I'm never too busy for you, Rory.
Mr. Scarpelli, there's two recent Oprah responses with Peony. And I see that we're paying a stipend of $2,400 a month for Peony. Could you tell me what that's for?
It's Panoni.
Panoni.
And that's for their office hours that they put in here.
It's, how come it's a stipend and not office hours? I mean, I hate to sound picky, but the stipend is.
The stipend covers his office hours for the month.
Okay.
I don't know what else to say to you, Mr. Moore. That's what it is.
I guess the other question would be, what's his office hours?
He has established office hours here. He's here every Thursday, and he's also here when we need him to do inspections and other things. It's all in his contract. All in the Panoni contract.
We pay him $2,400 just to be here basically once a week for all the other contracts.
You didn't hear what I said, Mr. Moore. That's part of it. And I said it's also in the contract what his other duties are.
And I'd like to see that, why we're paying a stipend rather than office hours.
Mr. Moore, you can Oprah the contract, which I'm sure you have already.
No, no, actually, I didn't, because I actually, the office hours and stipends to people mean different things. And there was another one in here that we paid Peony.
Panoni.
Sorry?
Traffic report machine training?
What are we paying?
Traffic report machine training. Would you like to see it?
Mr. Moore, that could be something outside his duties of Public Works.
I would agree with you. It's a happy guy.
No. Traffic count machine training. So that means that they did a traffic count somewhere. That would be my thing on that. That's what I think that is. I'll find out for sure what it is.
That's what I would like to find out.
Sure.
Mr. Rogers, I do like to comment politely, and I don't mean any disrespect, but a lot of times you say that, and I will be agree. You seem to like to criticize people who come up here to criticize. And a lot of times, I really don't think, I don't think the Board of Commissioners appreciates that people work very hard for their money. And I remember last year, I had brought up to Mr. Evans the Moody's report, and I know that you commented on Nutley was financially very, very well, and you guys did exceptionally well. So I had called Moody's, and I got ahold of the calculation team, and they said that they used two different numbers. And the numbers was, the average household in Nutley was financially, federally taxed at $125,000 a year compared to $85,000. There was two numbers that were used. That tells me people who work in Nutley work very hard. So in our world, the real world, we see things get cut back, people don't get raises, people don't get paid over time, people do work less time, which you don't see here, but you see it every place else. So sometimes people ask you a simple little question, like these two little reports. I question them. I'm not up here to criticize, but I am here to watch it because I have to do the same thing to my budget. I have nine grandchildren, and I have to support two of them. So I know what it's like to count pennies. But they come up here, it's the hardest thing in the world to do, to public speed, but to ask why something is being done is very difficult for people to do. And I think you should have a little more appreciation that when people do that, they're probably doing it for a good reason. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, before we adjourn, we're going in the back for a presentation. You're all welcome to join us, and then we'll come back out on the microphones and close the meeting.
Just hold it.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one comment now that the public section's over.